Called meeting order, but please believe it.
Please believe it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone have any changes? Do we need to make any changes or additions to the agenda?
I'd like to add to new business, talk to our chief up in Upton, and I'd like to talk about some fairground issues with some bills that were not dated. And I don't know if the phone getting shut off, so let's discuss that.
Michael asked, and he's not here, who was going to ask how that happened. He'd like to discuss that.
Okay.
Did you say old business?
Yeah.
New business, okay.
I'm real business, I just like to have the beyond meeting.
Add what?
Beyond meeting, just an update.
I'd like to add discussion under new business, discussion on old 85 road repair concerns.
Anything else to be added or changed on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
A motion probably second to approve the amendment, the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay, motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. Pull anything off the consent agenda? Now, please, John, let me give a quick read on this. Concerned citizens.
Second?
Second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay, motion carried. Next up is public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on, given the public comment. Next up is concerned citizen, Mr. Eisenhower.
You guys bear with me, because I'm not good at talking before a crowd.
I'm going to state your name, that way the people will listen online.
Okay, Bob Eisenhower. But I'll get right to it. There's a lot of backbiting and nitpicking that goes on at these meetings that me as a taxpayer and a voter, and I want you to know I voted for everybody in here. But what brought this to a head is my cousins and friends were at the house, and they was reading the county commissioner meeting, and they looked at me and go, "This sounds like a bunch of kids. If you ain't going to play my way, I'm going to take my ball and go home." And it embarrassed me, and it should embarrass you guys. And of course, I got mad, and the first thing I'm going to do is start a petition. And I got to thinking about what my dad told me, and he said, "Whenever somebody upsets you, don't start talking right away." Because he said, "You're going to say something that you regret, and it's just going to make it worse." He said, "Show the people the respect and the courtesy to go to them and try and resolve the problem. Then if it doesn't get resolved, then you do something else." But I'm here to show you guys the respect and stuff. And I want you to know, it's not just my feeling in the county. It should embarrass the whole county when they read that. And I'm not here to chew anybody out or anything, but I just think it needs to be resolved. I don't, and the newspaper puts it in the paper, and I was going to blame them. It's not their fault, they reported the news as it was. And if my cousin and friends hadn't read that, I wouldn't even be here. And I just wish you would consider it. And that's all I got to say.
Yeah, we're up to you, we're ahead of time.
I want you.
Nobody else coming in?
Thank you, Karen. Good morning.
Morning.
I presented a letter from Golden West to clerk out of to chair of commission. We are having some issues with our email. And what I gathered from Golden West, it would be a county that switched to Office 365. I am not receiving emails from certain attorneys, county attorneys. Therefore, I don't know what they need unless they call two days later saying, "Hey, you never responded, did you get this email?" It's important that I receive the emails because some of them are on timeframes. And if we miss that timeframe, that could be detrimental to a certain case. Also, out of the graciousness of the assessor's office, they have given us hand-me-down towers because ours are old and out of date and out of contract. The one I have now is not efficient. In the letter from Golden West, it stresses the importance of being up to date in technology. The ones that we do receive from the assessors are not spec to the clerk of district court, and to do that would be more labor, more time, more money versus purchasing a new tower.
So, we're just talking Office 365, your office?
Their office is what it was supposed to be, because we can't afford the whole county.
Right.
And Charles knew that.
Yeah, in talking with Charles, he's not sure how much more he can do with that versus the whole county. And it stresses that in his letter as well, that he's reached out to the providers. But if it goes department to department, it won't have the same securities. So that's why he stresses as a whole.
Because when we talked, it was $4,800 once we charged, and then they would charge us $600 a month for our emails. And right now, we don't pay for our emails for Jujub for a month.
And I understood that $600 would be divided through the departments, not just one department.
But the departments don't have a better budget, so it would still be costing us $600 a month.
Right, and I don't know, in speaking with Charles, I don't know if one department is going to be able to do it versus the whole county.
Yeah, if you go to it, then your computer, why not talk to the rest of the county commissioners?
We already have some departments that are already doing it, and they've been doing it for a while.
What is our monthly payment for Jujub?
We do quarterly.
Quarterly, quarterly?
I have to.
The difference in cost?
Question, is it, reading that letter, is it a software issue? Or you were saying your towers, the computers aren't able to handle? I'm trying to figure out what your...
Separate entity there, that my tower is not able to handle what the clerk of district court's workload is because it's spec to the assessors.
Okay.
I keep, $4,800 just for once, the one payment, never again?
Correct, that's a startup, correct.
And I know, I know the sheriff's department has expressed want or need for this as well.
It's difficult when I can't communicate with the county attorney.
Yeah, I wanted to chip in. It is a problem, just because Tina will try to send us stuff, and we'll send stuff that is really time pressing. And we just had something last week that was really time pressing, and we're like, she's sending me, I didn't get the email. And that could cause a big problem. Like...
And with other attorneys as well, there are certain attorneys that I'm not receiving their emails. Golden West doesn't have an answer as to why my deputies are still receiving them, but they foresee that won't be for long.
Are we under a contract with Jujub, so we can get out of there in time? Can't wait to find out if it's got, maybe the commission here?
I'm like down and a little confused. Is this, is this a Golden West problem? Is this a problem with the stuff we have from Golden West? Or is this just a problem that 365 has come along and we need to update to that to have the updated programs?
What I'm taking for, I think, is because Tina's equipment's old and outdated.
No, that is, that's some of it, but that's not, that's not the issue. Two separate issues.
Two separate, okay.
Does Golden West take any responsibility for their equipment being part of the problem?
I guess I don't follow the question.
Well, don't we have, all of our mainframe and stuff is from Golden West, is that correct?
No, we buy our, we're separate.
The Golden West?
They just maintain them.
Maintain, or, or, okay.
And to, and he explains inherently of getting it from Walmart versus Golden West, or Amazon versus Golden West, they won't have. It will take more for Golden West to put what is needed for the clerk of district court's office to run versus getting it from Golden West, the specs will already be on there, and they know what the county needs for district courts to run.
I think, I mean, I'm understanding this correctly. Compared to me, we've got Jujub, which is maybe a Volkswagen Beetle, versus 365, which might be whatever, you know, a little better performing outfit. And I think that's probably the issue.
My understanding is when an email, if I send or receive an email, Jujub looks at it and says, "Nope, you can't, it's not, it's not good," and kicks it back.
Was this, I guess it doesn't matter a lot, I'm just curious. Is this something that made the list, or did you want it upgrades? Because I was on the list, I couldn't see anything about computer upgrades or software upgrades. Has this been an ongoing problem versus just suddenly something that's starting to happen?
No, it's been an ongoing problem because we have been fortunate enough to have extra towers that the assessors have had once they've upgraded their systems.
And the assessors?
We're getting them.
The assessors' towers come from the state, right?
You'd have to check with Carol.
I believe so. I believe the state, to say.
No, that'll have to work.
Okay. So, we're talking just 365 for your office, or all together, for everybody, it's $4,800 to start?
No, it's for everybody, and I've already talked to them and told them that we can't afford that right now because Jujub is way cheaper, we don't pay for our email. And when Gilbert switched over to Office 360, or 365, whatever it's called, he was not able to send to other people in the state because, so he had to keep two emails. He had to keep his old one and his new one, because other people wouldn't accept, weren't able to get from his new one. So I said, "My office wasn't going to switch because I need to be able to connect with the courts." And I have no trouble sending to Michael, who's on the new one. So we, we're not interested in switching right now.
It kind of seems like we don't really have a choice. If you need this information, we need to figure out a way to...
And I don't know how this will affect not being able to receive emails when we do go to e-filing next year. We have to have a compatible email throughout states.
And you can keep our same email, and Charles has already visited with Jujub that they can just switch over, and it can be individual people switching. They all have access over there.
Kara has something to input.
I do. I know, I can hear it.
Could you please state your name?
Kara Larsson, I'm the county assessor. I just, I'm trying to listen, and we're, and we're getting ready to go do a field report. But I just wanted to interject really quick that we have been helping Tina out with upgrading her towers as they die regularly. Our hardware is provided to us by the state of Wyoming because we are under the direct supervision, technically, by the department of revenue and the state for utilization. So they do, supply us with hardware that is going to help us do our job with, connected with that. We have our own server as well. So when we have new towers every four years, we just take the old ones, they're really not that old, and they go in our vault downstairs for backups, or if we have emergencies. And we've been trying to help Tina with that by allowing her to use those, and Golden West comes in, wipes them, and kind of refurbishes them for her use. And she has been struggling with this for a while. I just wanted to say, though, my, my emails have been coming in really late.
That's happening as well.
I have an rtcconnect.net email that I do not use very often, but I still do have it. But I have assessor@westendog.com, and I also have kaylorlarsen@westendog.com. And I will get emails on those daily. And then I will get, like, just last week, just all of a sudden, I got 67 emails that were undelivered to me beginning in September of 2022 that never hit, that never hit my computer. And some of them weren't important, you know, some of them were newsletters or subscriptions from IWO, which is an assessing organization I belong to. But some of them were from people that probably would have liked to have heard from me, not almost a year later. And of course, there are other options for them to contact us. They can call the office or what have you. But I just wanted you to know that that isn't just isolated to Tina's office in the westendog.com emails are coming in late. I don't know if it's, you know, Jujub, or, you know, I had Golden West actually look at it for me before. But I'm just here to say it's not exclusively the hardware, because I'm getting brand-new hardware from the state every four years. So I just wanted to let you know that, just as a reminder.
I was just wondering if we could put it on old business for two weeks from now, and maybe invite Charles down. And in the meantime, Becky could get costs straight down, what we're paying Jujub by the month, and see where we sit, and maybe have an opportunity to get the guy that is the know-all, I guess.
So I guess, Mike, your office doesn't want to go to 365?
I don't know about us.
You know, if we'll have, if this, if we, some of us go to 365, some don't, if that's going to cause a problem?
It will. According to Charles in his letter, he said, the issues will not go away.
I think if we don't, I mean, it's, it's the new thing out there. So I think if we don't all go to it at the same time, I think we're just putting off the inevitable on one side, and the other side is we're going to ask for a lot more problems. It's, it's not going away, it's, it's an upgrade on, on that end, 365. And I think if we're going to do it, we should do it across the board. I imagine you have a lot more large files coming in, you have a lot more large files coming in, and that might be part of the problem. And this might start becoming a problem with the sheriff's office, too. I think, even though we don't have a budget, I think we need to think seriously of that, going ahead and doing it before we get worse problems.
On the, under the cost efficiency side, they said that Office 365 operates on a subscription-based model, mentions a pay-as-you-go. But that wasn't, is it, is it an upfront cost to...
There's a $4,800 upfront cost, and then it would cost the county approximately $600.
Okay. And that's one month?
Yes. And how that is distributed through the offices is...
Do you, do you know that $600 a month, is that based on size of files coming in, or is number of users?
No, $10 per computer.
Okay.
So is it the operating system that just isn't handling all of the emails, did he say? Or is it the actually, like, email provider themselves? Like, do you, like, diagnose this so that you could appropriately fix it, whatever expense?
He explained it, like, if it, when it gets to Jujub, if Jujub doesn't like it, then they kick it back, and they don't, it's not sent for receipt.
Because then I'm, I'm receiving them eventually, and I don't know where they're going.
It's almost like it's in Jujub security.
Right.
That's kicking them out.
Right.
Defining what the problem is, I'm just going off of the, the second paragraph here. It says, "There's an outstanding email deliverability. Issues will be solved by the entire county adopting Office 365." So they, to be able to say "will," they obviously know what the problem is. So that might be beneficial if Charles could explain that to us a little bit. This is the reason why they're not receiving them, or whatever.
Thank you. Is all that, if you're going to buy in different ways until that's the next meeting?
No. No, I don't.
I want to make sure it does, you know, sorry, your office, then I'll find you.
How many computers are we talking about for your office, or towers, or whatever? So they're two separate issues?
Yeah, there's just one for my computer.
Do you have a, how do you price them as far as how much is responsible?
Well, just from Golden West, he said about $800. We're a pretty efficient office, but this is making me not as efficient as I'd like to be. I feel like we're going back in time, and I'm just waiting for the dial-up noise to...
Waiting for that dial-up noise in the background. Well, if you're going to start going to e-filing next year, it sounds like it's the inevitable's coming.
Pretty, pretty close to the beginning of the year is when we're speaking.
I would like to move to go ahead and allow Tina to, to order her new computer. And hopefully, it would get here before Charles comes, and then he could possibly get it set up for her, if it's coming in two weeks. And then for us to discuss with Char, have Charles come next time and discuss the email situation.
Would you like me to get a quote from Golden West that had written a quote for you?
I want a second, kind of for discussion.
We have a motion probably second to, to, I seen it, to move forward as buying a new tower? Should we order, okay. Is there any discussion?
I think I have a couple problems with the motion. Do you have it in your budget to purchase the equipment? Or is it something we're going to have to take out of the, we have to find funds for it for that for a minute? We have to find funds, okay. And then secondarily, I would, might be nice to have a quote, I mean, just not waiting, not in a...
I, I don't get it's coming that we need to get the computer, but I, I also feel like if we do that, then we're committing to the, to the whole deal. I think we need to figure out where that's coming from and put that all together. Unless the computer needs to be bought without that on it. But I think we're kind of committing to the whole thing by doing that, because, and that's, that's my understanding. I could be wrong, so...
There are two separate issues.
So you still need the computer?
Right. Getting the new tower is not going to solve the, the issue.
Okay, well then, okay, that was my question, are we committing to both by ordering one? So we're not, okay.
Any question, the computer would be cohesive with Jujub or Office 365?
Yes.
With a tower?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know, any idea of all part, or do you...
Just in, in speaking with him, he said about the...
Is there any other questions or discussions? Do you have a motion on the floor, probably second to authorize clerk of district court to buy a new tower?
Which is second, we're going to take it.
No, I don't.
I can amend my, can I amend my motion?
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion, that we allow her to go ahead and order her tower if it's less than $1,000. And take it out of financial admin miscellaneous.
Do I get the second?
Sure.
We have a motion, probably second amendment to authorize clerk of district court to buy a new computer if it's under $1,000, so it can come out of financial admin miscellaneous. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay. Motion carried. All right, we're going to go back. Everybody ready? Oh, Michael, it's up to you and Brian, your own agenda.
You want to go?
So, through the state department of your grant.
Division service.
Yes, so, he can, the county attorney's office can put a victim's advocate in place. I don't know if you understand what a victim's advocate is. If you've ever been a victim of a crime, and I get called out to come out and investigate that crime, the victim advocate takes care of you as far as helps walk you through the next... The victim advocate takes care of you as far as helps walk you through, uh, the next steps, walk you through the court process, walk you through all of those things because we're not real good at that. We're so focused on, uh, getting that conviction, potential conviction or whatever. And quite frankly, the county attorney, uh, office, your prosecuting attorneys are not wired to do that very well either. And, um, it takes a lot of time out of it. So anyway, victim's advocates will be around one time. Uh, county attorney's office got a grant to put one in place, but it's not enough money to do a full-time person unless you don't pay very well. So we put our heads together and we thought about a way we could do this, maybe save a little money and, uh, put that, a good victim's advocate in place. Since the school board, uh, sent us that letter stating that they could not, uh, support the youth services officer. I talked to Jody about this and Michael and, and Jeannie about possibly doing both, having Jody do both. Do that diversion program and do the victim's advocate thing. We'd like to try that out, utilizing that grant money from Michael to pay a portion of her salary and then help. Uh, that grant money can also purchase like a laptop and some computer stuff and, and things like that. Jody and I have talked about that pretty extensively. We'd like to try it out because I think it, it will help in two senses. She's, it's the same people typically that she'd be working with. The school year for the youth services is typically a little busier. And then the victim's advocate stuff is typically a little busier, nearly some or so. We'd like to try it for a period of time anyway and see if, uh, if it becomes too much or if it's, it's not a fit. But she would still stay under my supervision. Uh, Michael and I think we have a good enough relationship that if it's not working on him, his end, we'll just bring her back to doing this full-time, um, vice versa. But I'll take care of this kind of stuff and those kind of things. I don't know, I think it's a way to save a little money, at least on the salary side of that particular line item. Michael?
Yeah, um, we don't, that grant, um, especially with the budget where it was at this year, you know, we'd be hard pressed to ask for more money in our salary line. So that grant doesn't give us enough money to pay somebody full-time wages and benefits. And Brian thinks that, and Jody does too, she had input too, that she could handle. I mean, I don't think our victim witness position necessarily needs to be full-time all the time. There are times when we need it to be full-time, but there are times when his side doesn't need to be full-time either. So I think this would be a good fit and I think it would save the county some money in any event anyway, right?
Yeah, I think it should. If we take part of her salary line item and, I don't know how exactly the details on the back end, how the best way to do that, but if we take, uh, basically on the voucher for the salaries, we have two line items and have one and have that grant money from my group. So that would save you guys, uh, some salary. And then if the city of Newcastle's gonna still participate, it'd save them.
Jody, you actually do, you have a victim advocate in?
The diversion programming services program. And she believes.
I fully believe.
Fully believe, she can do it. Jody's not one that likes to sit there for two months and put a fund, I'll tell you that right now. She's a hundred and seven miles an hour and fifty bucks or something. We'd at least like to try it.
How much is the grant amount and where are we, we receiving it from?
The grant amount's sixty-five thousand total. It's a mix of state and federal funds. But yeah, I think this is really, Jody's been over what have been about a week now, in and out. You want her there?
Is there any reporting requirements that may, for this grant that?
Oh, yeah, there always is. Now, I don't know that it's, it's enough to, uh, create any undue extra work. I mean, we gotta report a lot of stuff regardless, so I don't think. And I'm not sure, Michael, you'd have to clear up on that, how much of that she actually has to do other than potentially specific stuff, correct?
Yeah, it's basically what you spent, yeah, it's just basic reporting. It's nothing complex.
It, it wouldn't be any different than I would require to do as a supervisor, just so I know if she's.
But then that grant will leave us, if we do it this way, that'll leave us with the grant with a lot of extra money for some other stuff that we can do within the boundaries of the rules of the grant. There's a lot of rules, obviously, but.
There's some education stuff, there's some, um, equipment, I mean, or supplies, those kind of things.
I do have a question. So we don't know if the city's on board?
I would, no, I, I think they are on board, I really do.
If, if they, if they decide they're not, is that going to make this a real tight thing or?
No.
Still gonna be okay?
Yeah, we should still be.
Wait and see how much they're going to reimburse. We had asked for that, I would pay half. And they're right now only willing to pay fourteen thousand instead of the half that we asked, so.
So. This would, this would fill that gap really soon.
But this arrangement will have a big cushion, one big, more of a cushion than we usually would on both sides, I think.
No questions, no discussion.
I'll make a motion to, I would make a motion to allow the sheriff to use the budget and the grant funds within his budget to, uh, give this a try. As long as he meets the requirements of the grant and his budget restriction.
Second? We have a motion, Prop. 72, to allow Sheriff's Board to use the salary amount and the budget amount for Jody in the position of victim's advocate and youth services.
And I think for the purposes of the state, maybe I'm just being too technical here, but.
You need attorney.
Victim witness coordinator is the actual specific title. And then the grant side's gonna have to be run through the county attorney's office, so. It's just the budgeting part with the county that Brian gets to have fun with Becky on.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favor, please say aye.
Chairman? Question I had was, uh, when would, when would be the first update that we would have on how the, how that position is working?
Well, I'd say give us a, give us a quarter.
Okay.
I would say just to kind of get our feedback, see. Maybe sooner, if, if we've got some good detail, we'll come back.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. What are your responsibilities?
We're happy she brings candy, she brings toys.
So the third comes out.
Just come on down, we're loaded.
Next is liquor license discussion.
We'll see how it works.
See how it works and get there.
Well, I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, there is one retail liquor license available right now. It was advertised for two weeks that it was available and nobody submitted anything.
Is that package liquor type?
Retail, so there's three options.
Okay.
But it's under retail liquor license.
Okay. What are the options?
Uh, package, package, on, off. What is it? Package, either just sell package, either just sell in-house or off and on.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you guys know.
Which is the one that was at the travel club.
Yes.
Okay.
They chose not to renew, so we had to wait till July. We advertised, you know, if they chose to, this one was available. They never did.
Is that Gateway?
Yes. Yep, that was it.
We had the whole time frame for that. We were running way ahead this morning to.
No, we won't re-act it, it's just available. We just have one available now.
Who was that? Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. We have a straight.
These guys cannot talk until their stuff's been filed.
On hold, hope to get filed or?
Yeah, we have to. The thing that we need filed is a quiet title to, to where my, where Lori and Brady own all twenty-five lots of the subdivision. And it has been upstairs and we're literally just waiting for the judge to sign the form. But all of the due diligence has been done.
We will take a break until ten fifteen.
You're sounding board for me. I always check in with you, well, what are people saying? Uh, if we sue the county commissioners, if we, um, question the school district or the city on release of information or the hospital. Do, do you get those people coming in and say, man, why are Bob and Alexis so mean? Are you the good cop sometimes? Do you get a feel like the good cop or are you, are you as bad a cop as me and Alexis are?
I don't, I don't know. People come in and, and visit and I love to visit with people, but they don't, they never really say you're a bad cop or Alexis is a bad cop. But you know, it, it's a newspaper, you have to have broad shoulders because, um, we are the watchdogs and we do inform people in the community and, and that's one of our important roles. You know, an informed citizen, citizenry is, is very important and it, I, I think it makes your community stronger.
Moms of Liberty, uh, we got Birch on Birch Society thing, so our programs are really packed. That should be very informative, so have a flyer for anybody that'd like one.
Thank you.
This year we're sponsoring, uh, ten dollars to, to buy a pink or blue ribbon. That'll be all around the trees and the park, uh, this year. And, uh, as many people understand, the children of this country are, and in this state are under attack by multi-facing, uh, directions. And we're gonna address a lot of the things that, that they. It should be great. Of course, it starts off primarily and most importantly with our memorial for nine eleven. And the people that died or injured that day and the years that follow it down, so. Thank you.
Stan, who else on your board? The Freedom Festival.
Bezuma and, uh, we have, uh, more of a family than outside of that that works, uh, every year with us, uh, so. I can give you some other names.
Okay, thanks. Either me or Alexis would be nice, either one. Either me or Alexis. It's gonna be right in your face.
Come back into session. Next up is the vacation improvement certification.
Um, what's holding, um, with the advisement from Becky not to go into the Truman subdivision? I just wanted to, this is Lori Kilgore and she's here representing, she's the landowner of the current subdivision. And, um, for us to file the vacation, there, they've been working towards a quiet title and it is with a judge as we speak and it literally just requires his signature. All the due diligence and the time and everything has been completed. And as soon as he signs that, then that particular document can be filed. And once it is filed, then the vacation can be filed. And the reason that we, um, had come was to present that vacation in hopes that the judge had had time to sign it. And we did do a motion asking him to sign it as soon as possible, letting him know that it is, um, a great burden to the buyers. Because if, if, if we have to wait until September fifth, when you meet again, then it's one day after, um, a cutoff for them from their lender and the lender will incur another, um, large fee to them over, which is a financial burden to them. So I don't know if you would be open to, to the idea of, um, of allowing, um, I don't know if you'd be open to this idea, but, um, that literally the only thing we're waiting for is for the judge to sign the quiet title. And if he does that, whether it's today or sometime this week, then if, um, and I don't know, it, it requires from my, from everything that I've looked at in the subdivisions and it's been extensive, all of those, um, have three signatures. They have the chairman and two other board members. And if you had the information and, um, and you knew that the vacation had been filed and everything was done properly through the clerk's office, um, and all the requirements have been met, then if you had a, I don't know if it's a special meeting or, um, if you'd even be open to that or if you'd already had the information and knew what you wanted to do and it just required, um, three signatures. And if you're not open to that, that, just let me know, but otherwise that's the only recourse I have to offer to the landlords and to the buyers.
Just out of curiosity, can you come back in noon?
Of course, yeah, I would be happy to.
And then, uh, in the event that it's not done, maybe in the noon we could, uh?
Get the.
Make a motion to do something different.
No, I would be happy to do that. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate that. Okay, I really appreciate that. It is, have been with the judge and literally just waiting for a signature. But, um, so I appreciate that, thank you very much.
What is Mike Moore's, what's he gonna call him?
Um, he was going to the board on Monday and all he asked for was more support on this letter.
Yeah, I can, I don't know why he told me, I didn't ask for it. He just referred to me and I guess he's got a grant on some internet stuff which is there and he asked for support. So I told him to call Becky and put it on the agenda so everybody could be involved in her.
And the way it sounds is he's going to be putting that internet in Weston County.
Yep. So I really don't.
Well, that's the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just told him I needed to come before the board and to throw on the agenda and we would talk about it and go from there. But I, I've never talked to him before that day at all, so I don't know why I've gotten to him, but.
So is they are actually putting.
He said they are doing work here.
And he just wanted the letter of support from the commissioners and I told him to get it back, you can put it on the agenda. What he wanted us to support and we can discuss it.
Everybody, this is actually a letter that's supposed to be sent to us.
Becky sent out. Becky sent out.
Pretty agree with it. I'll send that, okay.
Seems pretty innocuous to me, he doesn't go ahead and let it shoot. Make a motion, chairman's signature to the Wyoming Business Council to, over the Grand Span.
I'll second. I have the motion, drop the second to authorize chairman's signature on letter of support for Wyoming Business Council and Charter of Communications for installing broadband in Weston County for a grant. It's a letter of support for a grant they're applying for. Any other discussion on that? Hearing that, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or say nay. Give us an update on the BLM meeting.
Yeah. So, and I'm sure some of you probably are aware of this already, but Newcastle BLM meeting request will be from nine AM to twelve PM on October twenty-fifth. And I think Caleb may have already sent some of that out to everybody, but I figured it's pretty good to let everybody know on the meeting, and I think it's gonna be at the, yep, at the Newcastle BLM field office. Interesting, leave it to him.
That's an open meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next up is a letter from Circuit Court Judge Bush. No. Do you hire?
Just have it. He's saying just show it to my phone.
Does that all you guys have their own business? Oh, is there any way I can speak on their own business? I'll say it's my, I glanced at the agenda the other night and saw the paragraph on there, but didn't realize it was consent agenda, so I thought we were on the agenda, but you're on under new business.
We do have you under some new business fairgrounds.
You do?
Yep.
We, we added it before you got here.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Do you ever see coffee this one? All right, passing up there. For a couple magistrates. Do you have anything about that, Michael? Enlighten us more.
I just assumed she wanted more flexibility in the event she's not here. The old magistrate went into private practice, she's not the judge's clerk anymore. So I'm guessing, I'm assuming that the old magistrate probably will still do that, but might not be as available since she's in private practice, and this will give more flexibility by having a couple more folks. I think her letter says something about that too. Just appoint somebody in the event of the conflict, or she needs to, or she's out of town for a conference or something. Both Denise Urban and Mark Hughes are well qualified to do that, in my opinion, so.
Would you agree in conflict of interest where Hughes represent Upton and Newcastle cities and town?
I don't think so, because she, she, he would just be doing the circuit court work, so it would just be, yeah, probably, you know, anything dealing with circuit court, nothing with the city or the county. Mostly just be criminal. Yeah, if a civil matter came across as best that involved the city, obviously, that might be a conflict.
We should probably have a motion for a second to allow them to do this. Appointment of two part-time magistrates.
Motion to, for the full point of two part-time magistrates, Mr. Hughes and Mr. Urban. Two are, for Weston County.
We have a motion for a second to allow the appointment of two more part-time magistrates. Urban and Hughes for Weston County. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing that, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Wasn't carried. Got that done, well, I guess we are up to the fairgrounds on your business.
So, I, I talked to Susan Bridges this morning and kind of got permission to speak to her, first questions we can probably reach after, but she also said that a representative would be here, but from what I understand, this, this by the way is not, I'm just trying to figure out what happened and if there's a better way to do things, but apparently we had some issues with some fair, fairgrounds utilities, one being the phone that was shut off, and very close to the power being shut off. We signed vouchers, and one of the things we did for the fairgrounds, at least my understanding was, is to simplify the process so that things got handled, and their funds were to come here, and bills were to be paid from here. Susan, regrettably, is resigning, not because of this, but partly because of the frustration, she said. But she also got, I guess, a response from the clerk's office that, something about paying taxes, and they don't even have a checking account, she says, to pay taxes, so she's really confused on that. Honestly, I am too, because I had no idea what she was talking about, but I did say I would bring it up in discussion. My concern is, is that the fairgrounds, utility bills aren't just shut off. You get a notice and a past due and a final notice, and to me, it kind of goes back to, if you look through our vouchers each month, there's a lot of vouchers that show late past due. I don't know if we're paying those late fees or whatever, but in a budget time where things are tight, this kind of goes and encompasses the whole thing. How much are we paying for late fees, and if we're doing it that way, and I'm not questioning it, why are we doing it that way? And why are we paying late fees, and why are we allowing the fairgrounds to have their utility shut off? It's concerning and it's frustrating for Susan, and I don't know the whole story, so I thought we could discuss it and figure out what the deal is.
So, I'll address their phone bill first.
Okay.
There's their phone bill, there's two months, a phone bill that they never paid. They brought it to us, they filled out their voucher, we paid it, we told them it was getting paid. And when they called us, Billy called to say the phone was getting shut off. We told them the check was melted, just like all of our regular bills are paid. That was on them for bringing two months of bills.
But we've been doing the fairgrounds arrangement, which was back when Marty was chairman, and they were supposed to be bringing their stuff, so I'm not saying they do.
They do bring their bills, their bills are paid just like ours. They're the ones that bring it two months. We don't, we're not in charge of paying, bringing their bills to us.
Again, I'm not accusing, I'm saying we have a problem if our, if our fairgrounds is getting the phone shut off, and people can't contact.
The fairgrounds brings us their bills, just like the treasurer's office brings us their bills, the assessors brings us our bills. We're not responsible for bringing their bills to us. We pay what's brought to us.
Either way, we're responsible as the county to make sure that our facilities are running correctly.
No.
And having our utility shut off is not a good picture.
We're not responsible for going over to the fairgrounds and picking up their mail.
I'm not saying we are, but maybe we need to change something to make sure that that doesn't.
There is nothing more that could be done for my office. A bill is brought to us, a check is made.
It's about, is there a way to do it better, is all I'm saying.
If they, and then as far as the late, so every month, the power bill will show past due. The city bill shows past due, because by the time the county, all of Weston County bills are paid, because we receive our bills at the end of July. By the time you guys approve them, it's sometimes a week, two weeks into the month. And by the time the check is sent out, it is past due.
So we're paying these late fees?
Every single company we deal with, we're not paying late fees.
So they waive all these late fees?
Just a second.
Okay.
They do waive the late fees because we're set up on a net forty-five. The fairgrounds brings us two or three months at a time, because Kara hasn't been there, so they haven't been taking care of their bills. And we've been trying to tell them, you can't hold your bills for three months at a time just because someone's not there. I can go in there and I can get you the vouchers that contain three months of bills.
Again, I'm not questioning that.
So I took care of it when they were gonna shut their cover off. I called James Curran at Tendermore Ben and took care of that for them.
But they did shut the phone off.
That, that's because there's two months here. That's, that has nothing to do with us.
Well.
There was nothing else that could have been done for that.
So how do we communicate with them?
We tried.
Something to say, what about the taxes too?
So they do need to pay taxes. They still have to pay taxes, and I've been telling David that they have to pay that.
The things they pay taxes on are stolen rentals?
No, this is, this is for the IRS, and it's a thing they've sent to you, and we told David that that has to be paid. You do a voucher and you take care of it.
How are they supposed to take care of it if they don't even have an account, according to Susan?
They do a voucher.
It's paid through a voucher.
They do have taxes.
Put it on a voucher and then send it to us and then sign it. We would sign it for paying.
Yes, and, and I told David that. I've been telling David that for six months.
Again, not accusing, I'm just trying to figure out why we can't do that.
But they're not telling you the whole story. I've been telling David this for six months, that it needed to be taken care of. The employment taxes, they don't pay anymore because Kara was an employee of ours. They still have their other taxes that they have to pay.
I think we've seen in the last couple of months that we have some issues. I feel with the fairgrounds that we tried to solve.
But you're only getting one side of the story.
I'm just trying to figure out, because I didn't know, so again, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm just saying, when power's getting shut off at our facilities, that's a problem.
Yeah, because their bills aren't getting paid.
So, in what we've discussed at our board meeting, which there's some questions, but there's about three human topics I'd like to ask. One is just, we're building out. But as far as paying our bills, I've talked to previous commissioners, previous board members, fair board members, have discussed, asked questions. I'm getting a crash course on how all this stuff works, man. And the, kind of the gist I get from it is, like this, I mean, you guys know a lot better than me, but the gist I get of sending all of our bills to you guys with vouchers and everything, wasn't really meant to be a permanent deal. And we're set up to where we do go through our bills, I mean, I, I sign, I initial vouchers every single meeting, when we initial the stack last night, we do. But, and we're like, the utility bills and stuff, we're, okay, they come in, we have a meeting, we have to wait till our meeting, sometimes we need once a month, and then if that doesn't coincide with, or you guys are gonna have a meeting soon, then you want to just, you know, gets pushed back by the time the vouchers get approved from you guys, that it's, it is late. So what we'd like to suggest is, just let's do away with the vouchers, let us pay our own bills. Let us manage our financing, let us manage our bills. So we, we just avoid all this, and we can be accountable for that. It's kind of basically, I don't know how mu, how that really plays out, would play out, or whatnot, you know, the route of it, but I, as far as me speaking, from my opinion, it's kind of a simplified version of it. That's, because I, we've got, our water bill is, shows partial payment, partial payment.
I understand what you're saying, though, that you have a meeting once a month, and say those bills came in two weeks before your meeting, and you don't approve them till your, to your meeting, and then they come here, and they might wait two or three weeks before we sign the vouchers. So I can see where those could get two months behind easy. That town goes through waiting for their meeting, and then waiting for our meeting.
Where some of this came from is we've given, you know, the fairground had their budget, and then at two-thirds, three-fourths of the way through the year, if they're coming in, they're out of money, you know, because their money wasn't allocated or spent according to how the budget was. So that's why it was set up on the voucher system, because then they could come in and look, we could give them printout of where every account was, what percentage you were at every, at every given time of the month, what accounts you were over, what accounts were under. A better way to management is why it was set up that way.
If, if we're gonna keep it like this, why don't the bills just come directly to us then? Why does it bells even have to go to them? If they're utility bills, and, and we're vouchering them, why don't they just directly come to us? We're, we're the ones that ultimately approve them anyway.
I, I would see no problem with the utility bills coming, right, directly to here? Because this adds us, that way the utilities are all paid on time.
That, that might speed it up by two, three weeks, maybe almost a month sometimes.
I know phone bill, the three main ones.
I think it, first first. Just, I think in the past, what was happening was there was a difficulty in account, accounting for the, for the bunch that was running it, and they thought it'd be easier if they had some help from Becky's office, I think, and that's the reason the route it was taken, and I mean, I oppose, I'm sure, I feel like you got a good handle on it, and you can manage your own budget, I, by all means, I think that'd be great, but it's just a matter of if you have the manpower to do it.
As far as manpower right now, we, we're pretty skeletoned out, but we do have Ms. Candy Lopez who's been working there on contract, and then she's gonna do, basically just kind of take over like about ten hours of the office stuff a week, because she's going back to work. But she's got a good handle on that, and I, as a board reporter, believe that she can handle the bill payment, management, budget management, signing that. I'd really like just, because right, I mean, right now, I think it's been brought up for more than a minute. Right now you got five people telling five people what to, to tell one person or two people to do. Right now you got five people telling five people what to, to tell one person, two people to do, and it's, um, and let's, give us a chance to manage, manage the board, the fairgrounds. Brooke's got a question.
Oh, uh, does Chairman sign off on the vouchers, like a department head would?
Not by pass, uh, not by pass, the board.
Fairboard having to meet?
That's what, no, they, they're just like any other board. They have to do their, just like the airport board. They have to sign off on their vouchers, and then these guys have to approve them too. Airport board signs off on their vouchers, and then our board has to approve them too.
I'm just wondering if it would save them two weeks if they're.
No, they have to approve them because they're their own board, just like the airport board does. They have their own funds.
Billy, would you say the main issue is the timing of the meetings? Is that, is that what's putting it back? My, my question is, is if, if the commissioners were to agree on you guys paying your own bills, explain to me the improvements. What would be the improvement on your fair board side?
Um, we get the bill, and we pay it. We just cut up the whole ladder we have to climb up. Um, we've had a bunch of, um, to get the power, the water, all these, both, both those companies said, you know, we never had a problem when, um, when we were just, the board was paying the, the bills. Uh, when we did the voucher system, it became, sorry, it became an issue. Yet not saying it's anyone one's fault, or any department's fault, it's just, it's, it's not working.
So, see, I kind of remember the way Chairman does, when this originally started, and I'm not saying it hasn't changed, but when originally started, there was concerns about the accounting system, which is why we changed to this, because it was, we'd run out of money, and not you personally, fair would come out of money, and then they come back, and we'd have to put more money in there. Um, but Susan did mention you've never had anything disconnected before. Um, but then I see these, where I see, you're putting it on the amounts, and the amounts are right, but then I see there's still balance due on all of them. Is that correct? On these water bills? I mean, so how are we paying the bills if there's balance due on every one of them after we're paying the bills? You see what I'm saying?
I, this is, I'm the least knowledgeable about. Any of this, is there a reason for that, or?
There's always, I just told you that. There's always a balance due because of the timing of the payment. Our checks go to the city. So the bill is sent, our checks are sent, and then there's always a past due on all of them. Even probably when you pay your own water bill. It's just that depending on the timing of when you send it.
And, and again, this isn't to blame the clerk's office or the fair board.
No, it's not. It's how, it's the timing of when the county pays. If we were to pay twice a month, there would never be a balance due. But because the county pays once a month, and it's usually the first week or two, depending on when the commission meetings are, but sometimes our first Tuesday falls almost two weeks into the, you know.
Totally get it. I'm saying that, what I'm saying though is, is that I think Billy's right in the sense that, um, this has never happened before, and now it's starting to happen, so we have to figure out how to take care of it.
I was gonna say that. They've always paid on vouchers.
Okay.
And they've only paid once a month, because they cannot just pay their bills at the beginning of the month or whenever they get the ch- the bill. They've always had to wait for their meeting, just like the airport board. They can't just pay their bill when they get the bill.
So is the airport, have you shut the phone off?
Uh, we haven't had to shut off, but I, I believe it's Powder River Energy. Um, there's usually, there, it, it shows, uh, it's like, it's like a double month.
Yep.
And so the payment, the monthly cycle is still pretty consistent with it, but by the time, uh, we get the bill and it's vouched and paid, ultimately, the other one is probably already sent or closed to it.
And, and they know, because it's how the county is, and, and if they ever call and say that they're gonna disconnect or whatever, which that's only happened to the fairgrounds the one time, because they weren't getting their bills paid, because it was just stacking up, no one was doing the vouchers, and we handled it. They've never disconnected anything out there, and it was just because nobody was paying the bills. But we're set up on, like I said, the forty-five net, airport, uh, road bridge, everywhere.
Right. All I'm saying is I don't remember any of the time being in here where we've had boards come in front of us and say our utilities were cut off. I've only heard it from the fairgrounds, so there's something we need to do different.
They weren't paying their bills. They weren't bringing any vouchers up.
We didn't get the vouchers, but.
I think we need to leave it status quo though, personally right now, fair board. You're about to have a two-man fair board, right?
Yeah.
So.
They are right now.
So, um, they can't even really approve it anyway, so I think we leave it as it is until we've got a somewhat fuller fair board. And then if you're gonna think that, uh, something you can manage, somebody revisited, I guess. But as of right now, I don't see as much we can do.
It might, you know, so, but just two people, like, on your board, it might be better if, then the vouchers can come here, so we at least get, you know, two, two board members are there, get their signature on, at least then we have a quorum of, on there, three signatures on the voucher to pay it, that way it's.
And now that you've got, you've got somebody hired.
Yeah.
So, recommend immediately get the bills over here.
These, these are the bills that she, we, uh, we, uh, our, we had a workshop last night for an interview. Uh, didn't go to, for maintenance, uh, to brief group on that. Um, but we do have Kami, she's a contractor. Start off doing finance, then she'll pay you. Office lady, pretty much everything. Um, and, so, you know, we have, like, her bill, her voucher will be, uh, Friday, so, yeah, so right now, it's me and David to sign the voucher. Is that okay? So how?
Bring them here. I would say we bring them here on a weekly basis.
Do we even, do we even bother the commissioner?
I guess maybe check over, see if there's any discrepancies or something like that, you know.
That would be a good idea. At least you've looked at it. We know you've looked at it.
That way, if a water line breaks, all of a sudden you got a huge water bill, like, there's a reason for it. Because we ain't, we're not gonna know what your normal usages and stuff are, but you guys should look at them and have it bring them here.
Um, I have a question. If there's only two of them that's in the quorum, is, I know state statute on, on some things that, that requires one of us to be, it does not require one of us to be the, the fill-in?
I don't know on that. I also, I think it's just, the whole thing falls back on us. That's why we should probably see all, that way all the bills should come here so we can do the vouchers.
I still recommend just putting utility bills coming directly to us.
At least, at least it's up for the, tell things to get, out of the going.
And it might work out that that's, would be the best way to do it. I move that we change, can I do this?
Just have, yeah, make your motion with second for discussion, then we'll go from there.
I, I move that we change the, uh, main utility bills, which is probably three of them, uh, to come directly to the clerk's office for payment. Change address to come directly to the clerk's office for payment.
Second. Your motion, property second. To have their utility bill address changed to come to the clerk's office for payment, is in discussion.
Question on that was brought up, that, uh, if that's the case, they wouldn't have an opportunity to look it over, like we were talking earlier, if that water name break or something, it would come here.
For the discussion purposes, I was gonna recommend having Kami get them, have them look at, and then bring them direct. Don't change the mailing address, so it doesn't, they lose their eyes on it. That way, as soon as they get their eyes on it, then have Kami bring them to us, we can get them paid on time.
So instead of the address, just you guys approval, instead of the fair board approval?
Just have, but just have, but have them continue to mail, sell mail them to the fair board, but yet, they get their eyes on them, and they get brought to us for payment.
I amend my motion to have, as soon as you get the utility bills, to look at, at them, make sure they're good, and bring them directly to the clerk's office for, for us to voucher.
Is that amended at the second?
Yep.
So we've got amendment made, or a motion made and amended, that the fair board, as soon as they get their utility bills, look at them, and then give them the pressures for payment. Got that. Is there any other discussion? All of the fair board, please say aye.
Aye.
All of the first name?
That'll be an improvement, Billy, because then you won't have to wait.
Are we, uh, starting to advertise them for that fair board position?
I'm gonna, for all three, I'll start. Um, I can probably get it in the newsletter this week for the three positions, and then, um, next weekend, it'll be that, and I'll just run it, and that, till you guys decide to start.
Do we just accept the nominations today?
I'd like to, uh, have him hear from the board to, and, I, I think, uh, because of the email we received last night, some of these people don't understand, you know, their roles and, and, uh, where the money actually comes from, and maybe have an opportunity to read the statutes on, and get an understanding of what's going on, how they do the business.
We have to hand up?
Oh, we, did we already accept the nominations or?
We did in our.
That was over the same.
Right, okay. What I was gonna say is, is that I appreciate those two, Susan A. and the Hunt, or the service they have put in. I wish they weren't resigning for their vote, it contributed quite a bit to the fair boards.
They'll get your. Answer there?
Yeah, um, the second one, part B, I guess, is since we are just a two-man board, what do we do about, me, well, what can we do about meetings and so on?
By state statute, I don't think you can, without getting yourself into trouble. That would be Michael's.
Yeah, I think.
Wheelhouse.
At this point, I think it's right under, it's commissioners, I mean, without a ballot and full board, it's because it's established as a five-person board, right? So I think, right now, the board really can't need, falls under the, this board's purview, until you guys get people back, some folks in there.
Would it be appropriate, Michael, for while they're a two-man crew, to regularly be on the commissioner's agenda until they've got a quorum?
I think that'd be helpful, yeah.
That's, that's handy for the next subject. Um, yeah, we're a two-man board, but life still goes on with the fairgrounds. Um, we got a lot of, a lot of stuff coming in, well, we got one decent-sized event coming in August, the board ride deal. Um, and then, uh, just trying to kind of clean some stuff up from this, this engine, um, for a while. Um, and we've talked about, you know, when, I think it was the last time me and David were here, we talked about money donated going into open class building, and kind of talking to you guys about, um, just looking at bids for some of that stuff. Um, we do have a list of things, and it's the list. Um, but enough, by no means do we expect, or, like, some of these things are very expensive. Uh, we're just kind of looking to get approval to go out and get bids, see kind of what kind of money we're looking at for these things. Um, and they include the track, the wall on the track, kind of a big issue. Um, we'd like to go and get a bid on that, see what, what, what we're looking at to repair that, um, and options and stuff. There's the wall on the track, there's three garage doors that, I mean, because as of how, at least how we, we saw it, our last meeting was, like, you can't even get someone to come and fix the garage door without the approval from you guys. Um, which might be a mistake, I don't know, um, but there's three garage doors that need maintained, um, fixed. Um, open class building, um, a few things on it. The kitchen door and roof of the event center, or the wall, uh, what'll happen in that, where the wall's punched in, it landed to the doors. The big kitchen door is messed up. Outdoor speakers, which we're looking to that, hopefully they get under coverage from the company. Uh, there's a water line to the outdoor stalls that was hit when they put a sign in a year ago, because the water line was, uh, foot deep. Um, the bucket chute platforms, again, like the bull riding thing is coming up in the off, I mean, it's, I guess it's a pretty big deal. And our boards behind the bucket chute for the platform are completely deteriorated, holes. And the water truck, um, the water truck, like the equipment, uh, the one person we had in last night for the interview, at first, he was interested in the full-time, uh, magnitude position there, and he has since lost his interest, uh, his, his business took off. But he offered a contract to us for a, a pretty high rate, which we, um, it's a lot cheaper going to the county shop. We understand it's kind of when they can get to it. Um, but, like, the water truck's been brought up a lot. Honestly, the water truck, as far, as far as the county, the fairgrounds use, it's, it's great. I like it. Uh, Garrett, you ran, like, mostly to fair, and it's, I think it's a perfect tool for the fairgrounds. There is, like, right now it has a parking, someone in the past, as we were out of the airlines, from the parking brake to the dump valve in the back. So, we'd like to see about getting, basically just get, if I could get that done, I'd be happy though. Um, and then, the big one is the drainage. Just to have, we just have a engineer come in and look at it, and it's a costly, so. But, that, that's an issue that kind of needs to be looked at.
I think what you need to do is take your list and get as many of you as you can, whatever is on that list, and get them in here, and, I mean, building grounds, we've said before that we need to prioritize and, and start taking care of some of that stuff. And it's, some of that's not necessarily expected to come out of that of the fair board budget. We have a budget line item for building the grounds and to maintain some of our county stuff. So I would get to work on that and get aggressive with it, and get it in front of us, and, and then we can start punching through, because you're not the only one. We've got a failing heater, heating system and cooling system in the library that's a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, that's.
So.
Your, like, earlier I said something, you know, about talking to expeditioners, and even before I got aboard, you know, I talked to a few of the rest of us. Uh, his way of, uh, describing your job is telling people how to spend their money, in a sense, as, um, you guys distribute money to different places, and everyone says, hey, we're more important than this guy. Um, so, so we all just prioritize it, and we understand there's, with the rain this year, it's, it's a costly, especially on the roads, it's, it's a costly, um, so we just, all, and all we wish to do is get the bids out there, we'll see what we're looking at, and, uh, then go from number one down, kind of just getting across my list. Like, when I got on the board, my main goal was to make the grounds a destination thing, uh, I really do think it can be. Um, I'm pretty, really ill biased, but there's much other aspects that the fairgrounds can bring into. Um, and, uh, my big pitch in this deal is, I don't believe there's another facility in the county that can bring in the amount of people that place camp and generate, I mean, we might not be just breaking the bank at the gate prices, you know, um, or just the, the, the initial net from the fairgrounds itself, but, man, like, you look at the high school, you know, how much money. Or just the, the initial net from the fairgrounds itself, but, man, like, you look at the high school, you know, how much money it brings to gas stations, restaurants, you know, everyone likes to drink beer and be a burger, or more, I think that's kind of a big, a big add-on. I think that's, that's mostly everything I think about.
Some repairs need done, the event center, what happened to them, is just fire and terror, or?
Um, no, I think, um, before I got on the board, like, someone hit the event center, like, roll board or something, damaged the tin. And David had contacted the contractor for that, and then, he said, yeah, we'll be there this day, and then he just disappeared.
Did we go after whoever hit the building?
That's really, I think so.
That was your question?
I'm sure someone did. But then, and I don't know what happened, like, the door, I'm like, the, I really don't care, like, the tin, because it looks fine, just a little dented. The main thing I'm worried about is the big kitchen door, I mean, it's a safety hazard not having it there. But it is, uh, you can't open it. And it's been like that for, for a while.
That the building shipped or something on that?
I think so. Till there's leaks.
Another thing, you know, that is, it's a concern that the water truck's got that airline reversed, that's a big safety issue, a big no-no with airlines, so.
It's still got brakes, it stops, but it doesn't park.
Well, it doesn't park now? Now the, just five-member board has made aware of it? It's a liability issue? That thing needs to be parked until fixed, I mean, parked until fixed. You put wheel chocks in front of it, pull the keys out of it, it don't move. Because that's, and if you, you know, I don't know what the board should buy, say, maybe get Darren over there, see, if he can get it back together for you, so you have it operable. But, my feelings right now, it's parked.
Can you?
Anything else?
Really? No, I was considering, oh, computer. We need a computer, our previous one is, um, I guess, deep condition.
Any work partners have extra lots?
I'll find out, because there's a lot of, well, so, you guys talk, you know?
Yeah, I.
Now. Because Golden West is always calling, it's in the, I'm sure computers aren't used.
I offered mine up. Tina'd give mine up.
I stole the box.
Okay, so, I'll see if Charles can wipe your guys' and the fairgrounds.
There might be an answer for computers.
They're brand new, so, brand new laptop?
We have a laptop.
Oh, you don't need a laptop?
Yeah, we have a laptop. I, I'll, honestly, I care about the computer side of it because of what has been processed and stuff on the old things, old software and stuff, hardware, whatever. Um, but we do have a laptop, it's just, it's not, I guess it's old and it's not very.
You're looking for a desktop, yeah.
Yes.
But, a laptop, you get a thing that sets, it'll set on and it's just like a desktop.
Does that have to say what?
They're just like a desktop, we'll check out.
Yeah, work with Becky, she'll work with Charles, we'll get you guys out and running with the.
Get a keyboard for it, a separate keyboard. Yep, it's a, it's a documentation that you'll put on.
Just want to say, uh, the hard work you've put in at the fair, um, don't get discouraged, I, I think the whole board, I'm not speaking for me, but I'm pretty sure the whole board will, will get this worked out and will get you some help and, I mean, you have hung in there and we don't want to lose good people on the board, so please don't get discouraged.
Bill, will you give the rules to yourself on before you leave in my office, so I can call you when I have that ready?
And our phone is back on. Uh, I think it was off for a day or two. I was able to receive phone calls on at my house through wifi calling when we came to town. Reboot. Yeah, every time, every time I.
Mine does that all the time.
Every time I come into town, I, um, I'm gonna carry that one, shut mine off, turn it on, shut the fairgrounds off, turn it back on. Mine, I get, usually get flooded with texts from today.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Next is the annex.
Yeah, so, um, I have a, just a proposition or a question for you guys. And, um, so the building where my private practice is in now is, um, I'm gonna, I have to get out of it for safety concerns and reasons, especially after some recent work that has been done next door. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that building, where it's at?
I am.
I can't believe it's made of this long.
I can't do anything, to be honest.
The plumber showed us, um, the south side wall, and, yeah. So there might just be sheet rock between myself and the outside, I'm not sure exactly, but, uh, anyway, so my proposition, I've been looking all over Newcastle for another location, it's very, and it's just, the, the community is just, it's not, there's not many business places we rent. And I want to be close to the annex in case I need to deal with the county attorney's office when I'm at my private spot. So, and there's not, there's not many places around here for that that are viable. Um, I've looked at several places, and they just don't seem to be viable. So I had a thought, um, that perhaps now that Focus, now it's called Newark, like, Northeastern Advocacy Center, whatever they call themselves now, since they only have those two, um, office spaces right there, I was gonna ask if you guys would allow me to rent that third space, to rent it, and then use another office, split it in half for the county business, split it in half for the private business, and then, then I'd also pay a fee for probably quarter percent use of the conference room. And, uh, that's why I have Brooke here, because we're gonna, we're rearranging everything, I don't know if you guys, how often you guys are down there. Where Brooke is right now, we're gonna turn that into the conference room, and where Jody's at, and sort of a place for law enforcement trainings. Brooke will mow over to where I'm at, and then Jeannie's gonna stay where she's at, Kim's gonna be in the front, and I'll be in that, the one right by the main street. So, uh, I proposed, um, the $200 for that third room, $100 for half-use of that one office, and $100 for use of the conference room per month. And I thought maybe it was a pitch to you guys, just so I could be by the county attorney's office accessible, not be wherever in case something come up and then happened to scramble down, because I have to do that quite often, right? And pay that rent to the county, give the county some more money, I understand.
Brooke, you should have did the sales pitch, that way we could, that way we could have come, yeah.
I do need him close. Do you guys know?
What were we getting for rent out of that other office?
That third office?
Yeah.
From Focus, it was $200.
$200 a month.
So we're, you're proposing the same as well?
Yeah, $200 for that, and then an extra couple hundred for the use of the other office in the conference room.
$400 a month. Have your own printer?
Yep. Everything in my private, I'll just, Brooke, I'll just have it, obviously, we know those government ethics rules.
Do you have insurance and things like that?
No. Got me on the phone.
You already have problems with that? Yeah, never get any.
Will, would there be a problem with phone line being changed in your personal office, your private office, phone line being changed in?
I don't think so. If it doesn't work, I can probably just get some sort of, um.
No.
No.
No, you're not.
No, that's not what I was gonna say.
You're just not away from that.
There's no track.
Hey, uh, that's not very nice, but.
I won't even allow that, I'm not even, I don't even have to.
No, that's what I was gonna say, but like, maybe make another arrangement, so my private Janelle assistant can at least have an operable phone that will not interfere with the county or use any county resources or what, anything whatsoever.
Like Debbie Mike, her's, you know, I don't know what the phone line situation is coming into that building, but.
And you can even roll over to a non-track phone, perhaps an iPhone that should carry it on.
Yes, my concern would be is if we have to, if there has to be some extra money spent for another phone line, something put in, installed, then probably we discuss it, you know?
Yeah, that would come out of my private funding, yeah, no, nothing, I'm not proposing my county pay for anything, I'm just proposing to pay you guys some,
Some rent.
Some rent to just house stuff, my own paper, my own printer, my own internet.
Well, it's a board's pleasure.
What's, uh, just for fun, what's the Focus's old room, that was the third room you said?
That was the third room that has direct access into the building.
Okay.
Right next to the extension.
And then the other room, aside from the old Focus room? About what's the square footage on this room?
That's, I'm, I don't, I'm not a good guy on that.
Find an old contract, because it used to be in, I think, an old contract.
I, I don't know anything about square footage, do you? I mean.
Approximately. Twenty by twenty, or ten?
Correct people.
You could go step it off.
I mean, the one that, if you guys are approved this, that Janelle would be in, could probably fit her in my filing cabinets.
Oh, thanks so much, you have her in that small room?
It's a nice room.
It's a nice room, but it's not, yeah, it's not that room for me, her, and.
And then he'd be going and dance. Let's talk old offices. And I would have my original office, from the old bridge.
I remember correcting the period just for fun, again, um, when we originally leased Focus, they were in a private, um, building, and, um, it was kind of matched to what that private person was charging for, um, square footage on there.
Okay. Now you're bringing that up, yeah. We just, we just pretty well mirrored what they were paying for square foot in a private building.
Just to try and keep from competing against some private individual that was on the rent, so. I'm making a motion to allow, uh, Mr. Stilkins' private, uh, office to move into the annex, if rated, as proposed, if rated $400 per month.
Second. We have a motion, part of the segment, to allow Attorney Stilkins to move into the annex, his private business into the annex, proposed square footages of the areas, that areas proposed for $400 per square month, for $400 per square foot.
No, I'm not gonna think this thing for doing that.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, I know all those favor, please say aye.
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 Say nay?
If you guys want a lease, obviously I'm gonna have to get independent counsel to.
Would you write a lease?
Independent counsel to, you know.
Write a police?
Write a police, yeah.
Have that for us, that's the end for segment two's end?
Sure.
Next, all honorary businesses, old eighty-five repairs.
I had some, uh, there was some concerns, and it might have been the, the difference in the language, some things that had read in the paper or what was actually discussed. Some people are living down in the subdivision just north of where the bridge is gonna be replaced. Were concerned that the repair on the road was going to consist of, of the removal of what is there and re-gravel. So gravel being the, the finished product on the surface. That was a concern that was brought to me.
Actually, right now, I don't know if we have a definite answer, what, we're still working with DOT on what's, what the final project is gonna be on that.
Okay. So we don't have an answer for them, whether it's gonna be final gravel or final? I think the wording on it was resurfaced, but it wasn't specific about what the surface was going to be.
I think, uh, the initial proposal was to use, uh, road, and then, it had been discussed a year ago, a year and a half ago, to pave it, but it was gonna cost a pretty penny, because there's also people that want it paved all the way to the tree, or whatever.
Past Greenhouse Road all the way, yeah.
Past Greenhouse Road, and the, um, folks in Sharon, uh, said they could run those numbers, but I don't know if they've ever got back to us on it, but I think it was, instead of a $4.2 million project, it would be, well, now it's, it's a $4.8 million project without that pavement.
You guys wanted culverts replaced, which was gonna take away from the paving, but I think Scott might have sent Jimmy an updated price. I'll have to look back at my email, and if he did, I will also resend it to all of you guys, so that you have an updated price.
Then, when Scott was here, he was talking about using like road milling and coming back in and spraying it with a binder, whatever they were, what their term for it was, but it wasn't gonna be gravel, it was gonna be like the road milling, with, kind of resurfaced with road milling and sealed or something. I don't think that could be widening, or the river couldn't have those new spots either, that was gonna be needed for the bridge. Yeah, I was gonna change approach on the bricks too, because there's still a lot of.
Unknowns.
Well, yeah, unknown that yes and ahs could be dealt with on that.
While we're talking about that, there's, uh, between, um, say, Grey Edition and Greenhouse Road, there's a couple majorly deep hot holes brewing, is, would, would that be something we could fix before they get worse?
I'll reach out to Jimmy after meeting, Tiffy needs something.
Soon, you know? They're, they're pretty, they're getting pretty deep after all this raining, and they're just gonna start breaking up here shortly.
I'll, I'll reach out to Jimmy after meeting, Tiffy needs something. Okay.
That was all.
All right. That's all we have on the agenda. We will take a recess in the afternoon to see if we get the signatures down for us from the fair's document signing. All right, reconvene, the next thing up is the vacation of the Truman subdivision.
I move, uh, that the board approve the vacation of the Truman subdivision once all paperwork is signed by the judge and everything is correctly recorded in the clerk's office.
I'll second that with a friendly amendment. Prior to, is it September first? Is that the date?
It's the last days.
So fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth, so by September fourth, after that. Fourth, so by September 4th, after that.
I think the fourth was, their problem was, um.
That's when the lenders.
That's when the lender was gonna.
So it's not an issue then, for us?
Well, someone lost.
Okay.
No, I have nothing to do with that, okay.
I'll just say, that's, motion is made.
A motion, property segment, to approve the board's signature on the Truman, the vacation of the Truman subdivision, once all documents are signed and filed in the clerk's office properly. Is there any other discussion?
Motion being made to make it time-friendly for the, the, uh, parties involved, to get the, the signatures in time prior to our next meeting, for a special meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
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 All of the folks say nay?
Thanks for that.
German at 11:25.